Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the February 9th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Welcome to all of our friends from our dog pound today.
This week, our featured dog is a two- to three-year-old Shepherd mix. Looks like she has some Husky in her. She was found in Colonial Oaks Mobile Home Park. She's actually been with us for a couple of weeks. She'll be available for adoption on Saturday at 3 o'clock, so stop by. She looks like a great pet. And if she's too big for you, or plenty of other dogs, we're almost full. Madam Clerk?
At 9:45, we'll have Rick Lalonde from United for Animal Justice and Dr. Woodley Marine Animal Clinic. Under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
No investments, appropriations?
So moved.
We didn't have appropriations either.
We do have transfers.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Just do we want to make a note that one of the travel?
Just the one exemption, that's all.
One exemption on the travel, okay.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions in Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla. I do have a couple potential new hires I would like to discuss. We have a... Obviously, we always have a couple at the county home. Seems like a revolving door. And I would also like to discuss our ongoing negotiations with the UAW, Job and Family Services. Both of those topics are allowable under the sunshine law for executive session, so it acts as at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session of those talks. Thank you.
Approving waive the reading and stay in the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of February 2nd, 2011?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Under Community Development, advertise notice in Non-Legal Section of the Journal on February 11th to fulfill the requirements of the environmental review record for FY10 CDBG formula program.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, approve an enter and renewal agreement with Maximus Concord Township in the amount of $3,700 to update the State's report.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Approve an enter and four D purchase service contracts with Child Support Enforcement Agency, the Prosecutor in Domestic Relations Juvenile Divisions, effective retroactive January 1st, 2011 through December 31st, 2011, and authorize director to execute and amend for changes in program. We have the Board of Prosecutors approve as to form. Prosecutor's office non-federal matching is $278,971.78. Federal matching is $543,472.65 for a total of $823,444.43. Under Domestic for magistrate, non-federal is $122,361.82. Federal is $237,525.89 for a total of $359,887.71. Also, under Domestic for juvenile, non-federal is $115,996.76. Federal matching is $225,170.19 for a total of $341,166.95.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, approve an enter and agreement with K. McCartney and Associates, Inc. in the amount of $197,138 for the rehabilitation of Oberlin Avenue, Phase 2 from West 30th Street to West Erie Avenue in Lorraine to be paid from the highway approval account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
No, is this... Go ahead.
I was just going to see if Mr. Holzman wanted to comment on behalf of the Engineers' Department.
This is the Engineering Services Agreement. We went through a selection process after the Commissioners entered into an agreement last September with Lorraine for this section of Oberlin Avenue between West 30th and Erie. And the K. McCartney was selected and we negotiated an agreement with them. So this is part of the Engineering Bond Program that was started years ago.
Now, this finishes all of Oberlin Avenue, correct? Because we already did the first part, so let's see the second part to finish it up.
The first part's under contract. They're wrapping the plans up. That project's supposed to get underway this year, and this is the second phase of that project.
And when will the second phase start?
Engineering will be done this year, and it'll probably be construction in next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Approve an enter and agreement with ODOT to define the limits of maintenance for each entity of Lurin Range Road, State Route 301 at the US 20 interchange.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
There's going to be a couple changes here, but advertise notice to set public hearing on March 23rd, not 22nd, at 9:45 a.m. for the permanent county maintenance of Schroeder Ditch, Carlisle, New Russia Township. Total cost of construction was $197,124 with collection of $2,125.86 per year with 58 parcels being assessed. Notice will be in the Chronicle on March 8th, and the residents will be notified March 4th.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Minister?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Don, do we have to do the NSP today?
It doesn't have to be done, but it would be very helpful in that I do need to go on to the...
May I come up?
Morning, Don.
Good morning. We have gotten an agreement for a memorandum of understanding between the cities of Lorraine, Illyria, and the county that would need to be considered ideally today. It could wait till next week, but I would need to be able to get the draft of the application online to begin the public comment period.
Commissioner, we've been successful at not only turning around our NSP program from last year. As you know, we were having a pretty bad time of it for a while. Pat Metzger came on board, and then Don came on board, and they really did a yeoman's job at getting us to a successful rate of completion, so much so that the state has graced us with another allocation. The good thing is, this time, rather than being partners with entities that are not located within Lorraine County's borders, we are partners with Illyria and Lorraine. So we have a three-way split that we're recommending on the NSP funds and a breakout. Did you bring that with you? I did not bring mine. I wasn't sure what we were doing.
I actually called Pat to... He's upstairs getting the notes and the... Also, a draft of the resolution. Unfortunately, it was emailed a little bit late yesterday.
Can you give that to the clerk and let the Board take a look at it? But I would ask that, you look at the distribution. The MOU has been reviewed by our prosecutor as to legal form. Everything seems to be correct, and I'd just rather move the NSP program forward so we can capture the signatures from Illyria and Lorraine and get underway.
Illyria and Lorraine agree?
Yes.
For the benefit of the U.A. in public, would you say what NSP is?
Oh, that is a Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and this is the third round of funding that was approved through the Dodd-Frank Act, otherwise known as the Wall Street Reform and Consumer Protection Act of 2010.
Ted and I attended the State of the City of Illyria yesterday, and they were talking about their Neighborhood Stabilization Program. And my question is, I... We ran out of time for a question-and-answer period after the city's State of the City. But when we do do a demolition project instead of a rehab project, what are they doing with the vacant land that the house is being demolished on?
Each city has the ability, and actually, each entity would have the ability to do its own thing. The allowable reuses are such as we're doing in our NSP 1, working with LMHA and a nonprofit, is we're actually going to be reconstructing new housing on a site under NSP 1. City of Lorraine has been doing land banking. We're basically, they're holding onto the land to reconfigure parcels, to reduce density, and to allow future development within about a 10-year timeframe is the limit there, and hoping to bring the private developers back. The City of Illyria is doing something similar to that with... as Lorraine.
The problem with the county is that when they passed land banking regulations, we were not large enough to take advantage of those regulations.
Correct.
They had to have 500,000-plus?
A million.
A million-plus for land banking. One of the things that Don and I discussed the other day was working with the Port Authority to be able to bank those properties. As you know, the county can donate property to another governmental entity for specific purposes. Clearly, land that had been demolished under an urban redevelopment design for future rebuild can be banked with the Port Authority for economic development purposes, community stabilization purposes, urban redevelopment purposes. So while we don't have a land bank regulation that supports us doing it in the county, we may well have a mechanism that we can bring to you to accomplish similar results, and we're working on it. We just started discussing it.
Correct. Currently, along with the existing model that we've established under NSP 1, which is assisting in the application, demolition, and reconstruction of property using nonprofits, the Port Authority is by far the cleanest way for the county to be able to acquire land, hold it, and then spin it off for redevelopment in indeterminate future time, is the easiest. After that, we go into having to create either additional boards and going through some time and expense to try and do some things.
The only other thing we could do is, we would have to form a nonprofit or convert some of the mission of our Lorraine County CDs... CIC. The CIC, we have some potential to the CIC, which right now monitors the revolving loan fund, the CDBG revolving loan fund. There's a few options there, but as Don indicated, we found the most transparent and cleanest lines and actually the quickest lines to be... to come up with a process that involved the Port Authority. So we'll bring something back to you, you know, in the coming weeks to take a look at. We just want to get the funds out there so the program can ramp. They're pretty sensitive about their timeframes, as we learned the hard way with regard to progress in these things. You may want to comment on that, Commissioner Kayla.
Any chance, instead of redeveloping or rebuilding another house on the property, to split the land or offer it to one of the abutting landowners?
That is something that HUD has actually changed the rules on, and that does become a possibility. It has to be done in a proper way. There's also opportunities, working with local communities, they may have identified needs. If you happen to find a piece of property that's next to a park, they may want to expand the park, or we may find with other public utilities that there may be needs. Big part of it's going to have to do with the location of the property and its ability to be reused.
I mean, as a former real estate agent, supply and demand is an issue, and we have such a great supply. If we were to, you know, demolish more of these houses and just leave them as green space, it would create more demand and increase the value of the properties surrounding.
Correct. And as you'd be aware, with location being everything as well, there's definitely some options there for us. And we are, under NSP 3, just for your information, while the regulations call for a 10% cap on the expenditures for demolition, there is a waiver process. I have been in contact with our representatives in Columbus with HUD, and they have encouraged us to go ahead with a waiver on that 10% cap. And we're looking at approximately 50% of the money to be used to go towards demolition, with Lorraine and Illyria already having a very large backlog of properties that have been so designated. So I anticipate us, once we have the funds in hand, being able to expedite their use and meet the timelines very easily. We've been planning this for a good bit of time and thinking about it, and it's time for public comment to refine it.
So today, what... Do you need a resolution today to get to the public comment?
Commissioners, I'd like you to pass, actually, two resolutions. One, adopting the MOU, and the second one, agreeing to the allocation split with regard to the percentages and the funds there.
Can we do that as one?
Yeah, certainly.
Also moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski? Aye.
And you will forward all that information so I can prepare everything?
Yes.
Thank you.
The other thing this morning was, I read an article in the Plain Dealer with... and also an editorial study in the Journal with regard to the expansion of US Steel up at the plant. While we're not very good at tooting our own horn here, both of them were remiss at pointing out that the county's Community Development Department was the driving entity behind securing all the necessary things that needed to be done with, in conjunction with the state, with the prior administration, and visiting Columbus and attending multiple Boards of Revision and Recovery Bonds, Zone Bond hearings and so forth to make that project a reality. A lot of times, we get lost in the mix, and I get a little stressed and frustrated. Everybody keeps asking what we're doing, what we're doing. That's what we were doing, and we spent a great deal of time on it, and Don and Pat significant amount of time to make that a reality through our Community Development Department and work with US Steel. I want to point that out because it hasn't been pointed out publicly enough, because it's a major investment in our community, and it was a major, major success for our economic development pursuits with our Community Development Department and our partners in the growth partnership. So I have to just want to thank you.
Nice job, and it was a long drawn-out process last year.
Mr. Innes, sometime, Ross, can you?
Commissioners, I do need a resolution. If you recall, out of Brentwood Lakes with Waterfall Drive, the road being cut off there, we need to put a turnaround there for cars to be able to turn around. In order to do that, we need to get an easement from Spitzer Hardware. Because there's always been a dispute over the ownership of that property, although they're willing to give us the easement, they don't want that to be taken as an acknowledgement that they have owned it all these years. So they want us to agree to enter into an acknowledgement that by them giving us that easement and us accepting it, it does not constitute any kind of admission or acknowledgement regarding the ownership of that property. So I would ask the Board to pass a resolution authorizing the President to enter into that acknowledgement.
So moved.
And how does that affect us? It doesn't... Now, it doesn't put the blame on us that it's our property now?
No, no. It's... Everybody's just saying, "We're just doing that so that we can have this turnaround without any..." It's basically saying, "This does not reflect on anybody's position as far as past ownership."
Who owns the property?
Right.
Okay. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski? Aye.
Other than that, I... You have any success, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. I do have one small threatened litigation issue that I need to discuss with the Commissioners in executive session.
Is it the one I forwarded you this morning? I don't know.
Commissioners, report.
Well, as I indicated earlier, I attended the State of the City in Illyria along with my assistant Sheri, and Mr. Kayla was also at my table. Betty Blair was there, and I gave her a piece of cake, because she eats her dessert before her meal, so it was...
You gave her my cake.
Yes, I did. I gave her that cake. So it was really nice. Mayor Grace did a fine job. Friday, we all attended the Groundhog Day. It's in conjunction with Team Lorraine County and the Community Alliance at JVS, and we had economic forecast, and it was... That was a good day, until after that, my assistant Sheri and myself, we did go down to the dog kennel. We were going to go the week before for... to see a dog be put to sleep, but that was canceled. And unfortunately, we are not allowed to adopt out pit bulls, even though I know that they're nice dogs, because I had one, and the one that we had to put down was actually a very nice dog. It jumped up and looked Gennaro in the face, and... But because it's a pit bull, we're not allowed to adopt them out. So I'm a dog lover, and I hate to see a dog put to sleep in any way, shape, or form, but I figured we were going to be talking about this today, and I wanted to see for myself what it's like to have a dog put down the way we're doing it in the gas chamber. And it's very sad, but it wasn't as bad as I thought it was going to be, even though, you know, what the outcome was. So I guess that's the end of my report, and I'm sure we'll be talking about that some more after Mr. Lalonde and his group comes up to talk about these issues.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, you covered things we attended. So also, I'd like to thank County Prosecutor Will's Office, Attorney Flanagan, Attorney Innis, and Judge Walther, our probate court attorney. I'm in my seventh year now, and Jerry states this goes back 12 years.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, Mr. Cordez, okay. Lorraine County is permitted to use the Green Acres property for any nonprofit governmental use, which benefits the citizens of Lorraine County, Ohio. There being no more further deed restrictions or requirements that the use of this subject of realty primarily benefit the children of Lorraine County, Ohio. For those of you, especially our Oberlin guests, that property can be available for other not-for-profit uses. So I mean, it's been a long drawn-out, but it's been so identified in the past that there wasn't much hope of using it for anything, and all we do is maintain it. So now we can open it up to other organizations, hopefully. Mr. Cordez?
My understanding and direction from the Board, so we need to clarify this, is once we were able to lift the restrictions, which we started when we boarded it up in 1995, was that we were going to sell the property. Is that still the intention of the Board, and do I need to start that process?
Yes.
That would be wonderful.
Along with everything else that's for sale.
Good. Our first step will be to get a commercial real estate appraisal. So I'll start that process, and then hopefully, we'll be able to move that into a more productive use. Thank you.
End of my report.
Board Correspondents?
Move the reading be waived.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Do you want to do the presentation?
Yes.
Yeah, let's do the presentation. Mr. Lalonde?
Would a Dr. Wood like to go first?
Sure.
Morning, Doc.
Good morning.
You're off today, huh?
No.
No.
Just taking a short break.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to address the Board. Lori contacted me, was it two, three weeks back, about concerns about two things, the euthanasia program and the spay-neuter. And there's basically four solutions as far as the euthanasia program. One is remain status quo, do what you're doing right now. The second would be to... I talked with Jack about this, would be to heavily sedate the dogs first before they enter into the chamber. And if... It'd be similar to like if we were a human, and you were put into a coma, and then someone just pulled the plug on your respirator. And that would be the second option. The third option would be to go to injectable euthanasia solution and have the current staff there perform the euthanases. It would require licensing. There's some controlled substance issues, and it would take quite a bit of training, probably years, before they would be proficient enough to inject in a vein. And the fourth option would be to do the euthanasia solution and just roll it into my current program, where we would outsource that. There's funds for that already. In fact, Jack, I believe we had close to 300,000 encumbered funds that unfortunately can't go back to the general fund. This is specific licensing fees from the... From the sale of dog licenses and those tags. So of those four, the third one I probably would not recommend, again, doing in-house euthanasia, just because of the... It's a labor-intensive... There's some techniques that would take years of a technician to even become proficient. And you would need someone with a lot of experience. The fourth option, again, there is money to do that if you want. If the Board desires, it could be done yesterday. We can eliminate the gas chamber, have all euthanases just done outsourced. And I would RFP that with all the vets in the county, whoever wants to perform it. We do that and roll into the program. And again, the first option, status quo, and the second option, to repeat, would be to heavily sedate, and that could be done in-house, very inexpensively, where the dogs are basically in a plane of anesthesia before they go into the chamber. The second issue was spays and neuters. Currently, we have a program in effect that all animals that are adopted are given a certificate, and they can go to any veterinarian in the county and have that spay or neuter provided. There's been about a 20% from what I understand redemption rate. Now, I'm assuming that that's not an accurate number, because a lot of these dogs are already spayed or neutered. Some are given into a home, it doesn't work out. A week later, they give the dog to their cousin or their neighbor, and who knows the final outcome of that dog? The majority of them that I see, sometimes it's been six months, a year later, and the certificates expired. They still get it spayed or neutered, because it's an inconvenience when you have a dog coming into heat in your house. It's not a pleasant experience, and the majority of pet owners will have that done. May not utilize a coupon, but it's still getting done. It's not being very well followed up. A very inexpensive solution, I mentioned this to Lori, would be to follow up. It wouldn't take much but a phone call to ensure that these things are done, and you can continue with the same exact program you have now, just enforce it better, where there's better follow-up to ensure that these animals are spayed and neutered. The second option is to, similar to the euthanases, just we just do them all. We just outsource it. And you come in, adopt a dog, you come in a pound on Tuesday and say, "I want this particular dog," and they say, "Well, it'll be ready for you on Thursday." And that dog goes out, gets spayed, neutered, whatever needs to be done, and then they pick it up at whichever veterinarian in the county does that particular procedure. And easy solution. So I leave the final decision up to the Commissioners. You have any questions on options or procedures?
Well, myself, Tom, what's the cost of having the spay and neuter done in-house?
In-house, right now, we are getting reimbursed $100 for the spay and neuter. There is more than enough money in the medical fund. We do not use it all because of the supply and demand. We take out as many as we can, as many as the nonprofits can remove, we take out. We did 113?
147.
147 this year. And that's only because that's as many as they could adopt out. If they could adopt out 400, we could do 400. There'd be zero euthanases.
That's at the APL are you talking about?
APL, Erie Shores, any of the humanitarian organizations are welcome to utilize the program. There's another one, too. Animal House, I think, was another one that did a few.
That's where he spent three years, Humane Society.
There's three or four that we've worked with. But again, we open up to anyone. So it's not an issue of not having enough funds to do it. The issue is that the humane organizations cannot adopt enough dogs out, and that's the limiting factor, is the more that they can adopt out, the more they can take in. And with Friendship Animal Protective League, for an example, we'll have two or three dogs that are ready to go from the pound, but they have no space, because they haven't adopted a few out. Once they have space, then we bring those dogs in. We've kept dogs in the pound for weeks and weeks and weeks, even though by law, I believe it's four days in this county, three days by state law. So we have the space. There's been some renovations. So we, we have the space. There's been some renovations. We've got some new cages. The disease rates have gone dramatically down. It was kinda surprising. Once we started vaccinating for parvo, we actually increased our parvo rate for the first two or three months. Again, a lot of those dogs have it before they come in, but there's never been a case that we've transmitted the disease once they're in the, the shelter. Jack's done a great job as far as implementing the procedures that we had recommended in the past, as far as sanitation and air control. And we've had a real good response as far as disease prevention. We used to have a lot of kennel cough and that's down mainly because of the cleaning and as well as the in-house vaccination program. So the things that, that have been implemented have really made some differences. Again, if you wanted to get to as low as possible euthanasia as possible, the, you're gonna get to a certain point where it's just gonna level out. There's, there's only gonna be so many adoptions, so many dogs that are suitable. A lot of these dogs are old and debilitated. Some of them are pit bulls and I, I agree with you Lori, that breed-specific laws are, are poor.
Yes.
Where there may be a real mean child that we don't put to sleep that has a much more tendency to bite than, than a Staffordshire terrier or a pit bull mix. But yeah, there's, there's plenty of funds Ted, as far as, as doing that options.
With regard to the pit bulls, I heard you mention that and now Doc has mentioned it. It isn't that we can't adopt pit bulls out, okay? I mean, we, that's a local regulation, a local part of our SOP. There's specific regulations with regard to those animals when they're in certain communities. But, but the, I, I guess for clarification, I surely should say this. I want, I think it was probably a decade ago, or longer, where the board adopted a policy of not reintroducing that breed back into general circulation with regard to adoption. So that's something you may wanna take on the decision and take a look at. I, I just wanna be.
Are there Ohio laws relating to pit bulls as far as like having to get additional?
No.
House insurance and things like that? I've heard nothing like that.
Certain communities, certain cities may have some.
It's all local. What happens is a dog is not considered vicious until it actually has to bite somebody first. Then it's a vicious dog.
Right.
So, so with regard to some of our cities, I, I'm not particularly sure what regulation they have in place. But I, I, I was, I heard you say that and then I didn't wanna interrupt, but, but this is something that you may wanna take a look at. If it's concerning to you, you do have some flexibility with regard to this matter. And it wasn't adopted by this board. It's post this board and that's probably why you're not aware of that.
As far as the, the spay and neuters, what do you think about maybe the expiration, we have an expiration date of six months on that? Is it possible if we keep it like a year or, or longer that more people would?
One month.
One month? Maybe if we don't have an expiration date, more people would utilize the, the redemption or the coupon redemption?
We could increase the, the coupon to, if the board pleases, three months, six months. Because I do have cases where if a dog is in heat or if the dog is, is, does have some kind of ailment by the time it gets to the veterinary, veterinarian, you know, we do that. In cases like that, I advise the office staff to go ahead mail in the coupon so they would get the fifty dollars credited to them by the time the spay or neuter surgery did take place. We have done that.
I think that would be, one of the things is to extend that expiration date. And also, I don't know if we have time there now to do the follow-up to see if.
I've got a note on that.
Okay. If people, yeah, if they are.
I work out a, I work out a program with the receptionists to that.
Okay. I guess my other question is, when you said with the euthanization, the second option you said about.
Heavy sedation.
Heavy sedation prior to putting them into the gas chamber. Like I said, I only seen it one time and the dog walked right in there and didn't care and didn't, you know, he was just like, oh, okay. And like he was just in a regular cage. So are, do most dogs, do they get nervous and are they afraid when they go in there? Is that why you suggested that?
I have no experience with this chamber whatsoever. I've never seen it and no knowledge of, of how they would experience that. Just through, from what Jack has explained, I understand, I understand the medical process.
Is that like a narcotic type of?
We'd have them in a plane of anesthesia. They would be out before they.
I, I kinda have a concern of having like narcotics at the dog pound. Would it be?
As far as being a controlled substance, we don't have to use, well, it's a class two. It's not a, there's some record-keeping, but we can do that. I mean, I would outsource it. I would control that.
Oh, okay.
I would not recommend storing controlled substances, having you get your own controlled substance license.
Okay.
Again, that also goes with the third option with, as far as, if you wanna go to the injectable, I would not recommend having injectable done by the current staff there or, I'd outsource that.
Correct.
So you can outsource it to injectable. You can use heavy sedation and then the chamber or a status quo.
How are most county kennels doing it around the state? I know you have discussions. Is there a past practice or normal practice?
According to Rick, I believe most of them are going to injectable.
All of progressive kennels are moving towards injectable.
Do you know?
A lot of, about, about one-third, less than one-third are using the method that we use. Carbon monoxide chambers is, is not accepted by NACA, National Animal Control Association. They have, they have, they've taken a liberal stance on that. And also, they've, they've enforced EBI, euthanization by, by injection. But most of the, most of the counties are smaller in size where they would have a doctor come in with a black bag. You know, not as many dogs, not, not as many dogs as we have or anything like, anything like that. Surprisingly enough, over in Erie County, Barb, I think when you and I went there, she had that one that was, was as big as that door, you know? And was, you know, and she, she didn't nearly do half as much business with, with dogs as, as we do. And she euthanizes probably once every couple, you know, once every month, maybe every, once every couple of months, something like that. So. I think in the, in the past, it was a cost issue. When we're doing over, in the past, you did probably four or five hundred dogs a year. Now we're down to about two hundred. Well, that was, that was my next, that was my next point after. Total seized eleven hundred dogs. This is not, these are not dogs that are, that are surrendered. These are seized dogs. We euthanized only two hundred and twenty-three. And if you look back into. Probably half of those were pit bulls. When I came on board in two thousand and five, we euthanized seven hundred and twenty-eight. So I have tried to make the kennel put in a, in a brighter light over the past couple of years and almost six years on the job.
Right. And our dogs of the week, batting a thousand, every single one of those has been adopted?
Every single one that we have come, has either been adopted or it's gone through Dr. Wood's program. Or it's gone through the Cleveland APL, one, one of the other. So. Any other questions?
Not yet.
All right. I'll stay around if anyone else.
If you would, please. Thank you. You're up, Rick.
Your dog and pony show.
Without the pony. Oh, you're the pony.
Well firstly, I'd like to thank Commissioners Kukowski and Commissioner Calo so much for having us here today. And I would like to say that I agree with virtually everything that Doctor Wood said here. I need to discuss some of the options and I'd like to go over some of these in more detail and stuff. And you know, there's some of these charts, if they're, you know, if we don't need to go over some of those, I can just skip them or flip through them quickly here. Okay, so as you can see here, I wanna talk about what's working at the kennel, what can needs, what needs some work, euthanasia and the spay and neuter, and then some quick thoughts on the rescues and profit losses. That'll just be real quick. And then some conclusion and then I'll go over. Well, the supporting slides, I don't really plan to go over those unless there are any questions or discussion about it. You know, I think there's been a real win-win-win situation, a win for the county government, a win for UFAG and most importantly, a win for the dogs, our collaboration the last four years. I mean, the, the county kennel has just really been transformed in the last four years. The big indoor cages are just great, giving the dogs some extra room. The fenced outdoor play areas are just fantastic for the people to go and play with a dog. We see families come and they play fetching stuff with a dog before they pick it out. And just gives them a way to stretch their legs, you know, like Mr. Warden Zampa said and Dr. Wood said. You know, dogs are staying there longer now because we don't have to put so many of them to sleep. We can keep them longer. And so some of these dogs do have a, a real need to get out and stretch their legs. And it's just great to have that outdoor play area. The medical fund's definitely working, you know. I would think out about maybe, you know, ten dogs that we thought might need medical treatment before. You know, probably nine out of ten of them are getting it now. I mean, and I, I don't mean to be negative on the one out of ten. It's like, you know, of course, the county's never gonna treat a dog like you would, you know, Commissioner Kukowski. I mean, they've got hundreds and hundreds of dogs. They can't give each dog personal attention like a individual homeowner would. As you can see, if I go to this next slide here, there's a, a dog here that was just given a treatment by the dog warden and Dr. Wood collaborated together and gave this dog a hip surgery 'cause it broke its femur here just like about a week or so ago. So, you know, that would have never happened in the past. So that's just such a big improvement over what we had. The vaccines, Boratella, I've heard a lot of rescue groups tell me that they never got a dog out of the county kennel in the summer that didn't have Boratella before, or commonly called kennel cough. And it's basically a thing of the past now. I mean, I didn't notice it. Where before, you go in there in the summer, they're practically all coughing. So, you know, the vaccine program has run a big deal. And I'm sure that, you know, overall, the parvovirus has been reduced a lot. That's a great thing to get the parvovirus for the dogs. It is very important to get these on intake and I'd like to, you know, hopefully we can progress to where we get them within like an hour of the time they're done. But I've helped Dog Warden Zampa do these before and he's just really good at it. I gotta give you credit for that. Still some things that need work in. I have to point out, you know, that these, these numbers aren't really that bad. I mean, like I said, you know, there are a fair amount of visits. We had twenty-two out of thirty-seven visits. We had people go over there and fill out forms and stuff and find out the missing cage cards. But sometimes they are really bad. Like on one day, they were up to seven cages without cards on them. Sometimes a dog will come in there and it'll be several days before it gets a cage card on it. To me, all these dogs ought to be getting, you know, cage cards within at least four hours. And I mean, that's what Terry Pina used to tell me, you know. I, in fact, when I told her I thought it should be done within four hours, she gave me a promise that she would get them all on and within one hour. 'Cause it's, you know, that's the first step towards adopting a dog. We can't put it on any of the websites, the county one or the Pet Finder one. And nobody can come in and take a dog if we don't know when it came in and when it's available. So I think we need some work on that. And the water and the bowls, like, you know, one day there was up to nineteen bowls, I mean, without any water in it. So cage cleaning, one day there was, out of the thirty-seven visits, there was up to twenty dirty cages. But on average, about four cages a visit. So part of the reason I'm bringing up this, not just that, because there is so much time to get these things done. The staff really has plenty of time. I mean, the thing is, a lot of times when we go there, sometimes the staff is out there working, but a lot of times we go there, they're in the break room. I'm talking about the, like, community service and the kennel keepers. I'm not talking about the, the dog warden or the deputy dog warden. But it's like, when we go there sometimes, or like at ten o'clock, there's sort of like a mad rush to come out and get things cleaned up. It's like, well, if the, if they start work at nine o'clock, why do they wait till, you know, volunteers get there to start cleaning it up? So I think some more needs, work needs done on that and the intake evaluation. Sometimes the dogs aren't given a visual inspection, you know. It's like the, we go in there and see the dogs and like point out the problems. And I know that, you know, they can't spend a long time with every dog when it comes in, but every dog should, and, you know, I've discussed this with you guys throughout the years. I've discussed it with the dog warden. I discussed it with Dr. Wood. And Dr. Wood has made out forms and stuff. It really doesn't take that long just to check out the dog's eyes, ears, tail, coat. You know, just see if there's anything glaringly wrong, not to do a physical on the dog. But that's an area we could use improvement. And then the timely updating of the websites. I mean, there are all kinds of examples on this, but I just, what, next page, please? There was a dog that came in to the kennel. Let's see. There was a dog that came into the kennel, a female black lab, and I just put from Thirty First Street so you could go see, you know, back in the records, see when it came in. And there have been three dogs that have been in the cage since that dog was in the cage and it was still on the website as of last night. I put the picture in here so you could see it. And I still, I have a, I don't know if the thing's working here. Now, there was the thing that could, you know, look and see a piece of paper here, but there, the dog was still on the website as of last night, even though three other dogs have been in the cages since then. And that's one of the things. I, I did see though that a whole lot of dogs were put up there yesterday on the website. And, you know, to prevent, present both sides, the pictures are really nice now, so much better than they used to be. They're like a zoom in on the dog's head where it used to be, there's, you know, you just see like half the yard and the dog was just sort of, you know, not very big in the picture. So they're doing a real nice job of cropping the dogs there. But yeah, the website's just, you know, could use some more work. So I won't go over all the details of that, but okay, the next slide, please. Okay, so on the euthanasia, the gas chamber versus the lethal injection. You know, Dr. Wood gave four different options that you could do on that. You know, the status quo, sedate and gas the dogs with the gas chamber, inject them by the staff or euthanization by, you know, a professional. Number three, I would not recommend at all. I just think that's a really dangerous route to be keeping those chemicals at the county kennel and having the current staff, you know, with their current training and stuff, do those. Our, our recommendation would be by strongly, you know, number four, to have it done. To have either Dr. Wood and his staff do it or for Dr. Wood to use other vets like he uses Dr. Fox and stuff of that nature. And the one thing I just wanna elaborate on what Dr. Wood said, a lot of people in the audience might not know it, even though the commissioners obviously know it extremely well, but this is not part of the general fund the tax money goes with. You know, the dog kennel is totally funded by the dog tags. And so, you know, the, the extra money here can't be used obviously for other county stuff. It's just for the dogs. And like Dr. Wood said, there's around three hundred K of money that can be used. So it's not like it's gonna increase anybody's taxes or anything to, to do this. So with the euthanization by the gas chamber, like I say here, a lot of places, you know, the, the people pick it and they write opinion letters and everything to get rid of the gas chamber. We've had very good rapport with the county commissioners and that's not how we wanna do things. You know, we think, as we've saw here before, these things we've been working on together have been a really win-win situation for all of us and we wanna keep it that way. So we're gonna, you know, appeal to your intellect here with the facts and stuff and, you know, hopefully persuade you to eliminate the gas chamber. There have been many studies done, compare the cost of the materials and the labor and everything and show that the lethal injection is actually, or EBI, like the dog warden said, is, is actually about the same cost or less expensive, you know, than the gas chamber. But I'm really not coming to you from a cost thing. It's just some people think that it's way, way more expensive and you know how studies are. You can get five studies say one thing, five studies say another thing. So there can be a little bit of variance in there. But what I think the studies show is that they're at least in the ballpark of each other. And like I say, some, according to the, many of the things I've seen, in fact, the only ones I've seen lately claim that's actually less expensive. But I'm sure there, you could find other studies that would claim the opposite. Okay, so next chart, please. There's a, it's very clear here that states are banning the gas chamber. More and more states keep banning the gas chamber as time goes on. And that's another thing we might wanna consider. I think our gas chamber is about ten years old here. I don't know if. Eleven years old. And I think there's a, you know, like a lifespan of these things. So that would be another thing too. I know they need to be inspected frequently. If there is a lifespan to that and if this is getting near the end of the lifespan, you know, does the county really want to buy another one? Like I say, I'm not sure exactly what the lifespan is. So I don't wanna pretend to know it. But then, you know, it's something the county might wanna consider. Do they wanna buy another one if it could be, you know, made illegal in Ohio in a few years anyhow? And the other thing to notice here is when I've done the research, I haven't seen any state ban lethal injection, you know. So there is a trend that more and more states keep banning the gas chamber, but none of them ban lethal injection. So there are a lot of statements here, you know, I have on the, on the gas chamber, a lot of concerns about, a lot of concerns about the gas chamber. And what I have here, you know, and I'll go over this and don't have to really go over all the charts, but these, these four societies are really speaking extremely loudly and clearly about this. And a lot of these just came out with statements here recently, you know, like the American Veterinary Medical Association. They say the advantages far outweigh the disadvantages of going to EBI. The American Animal Control Association, they say injection by sodium pinobobothal is considered the only acceptable method for most companion animals. So, you know, they're saying it's the only method. So, that's pretty strong wording. The Association of Shelter Veterinarians, so that's really what this is. You know, it's a specialty of veterinary medicine where they look at it just for shelters, you know. And they have hundreds of members. And they say the use of carbon monoxide as a method of euthanizing dogs and cats and shelters is unacceptable due to multiple humane operation and safety concerns. I mean, I don't know how many people saw in the paper, but just even in Denver this last week, there were something like forty-six people hospitalized from a huge ice skating rink. They think that they got carbon monoxide from the ice scrapers and cleaners. So, it's really very dangerous stuff. I mean, it comes out, it comes out a lot of things, like exhaust and things, but that's very dangerous. And then, the National Animal Control Association. You know, fortunately, here, we have a good relationship with the county commissioners and the dog warden. But, you know, in a lot of places, it's like the dog wardens are, the dog wardens and the humane societies, the rescue people are sort of like at each other's throats and everything, and they won't agree about anything. Well, I mean, what's really important about this is, you know, the Association of Dog Wardens, basically, the Ohio Dog Warden Association belongs to the National Association. And they condemn the use of the carbon monoxide in the gas chamber. So, you know, they're, they're agreeing with us, the animal rights people. So, what I'm telling you is not, you know, just a bunch of, and I know, you know, we're not really emotional or rational. But it's not just a bunch of, you know, emotional dog people that are banning this. I mean, basically, for the NACA to come out and agree with us, animal people, sort of like the Cleveland Browns players saying, you know, Pittsburgh Steelers are nice guys or something, it's just pretty rare. So, so, the next charts, I just, they talk about the Association of Shelter Vets, about how it's hard to achieve the recommended concentration of six percent. And they talk about placing multiple animals in a gas chamber might frighten and distress the animals. Now, you know, I'm really glad, Commissioner Kokowski, that you went to see that. And I'm sure, you know, there are a lot of times in which a dog goes into the gas chamber, and it just becomes unconscious, and it dies without any pain or suffering. And fortunately, you didn't have to go through seeing that. But, you know, according to these people that study it a lot, they talk about when you place several animals in there, it can be a different story. Did you see one or several being there?
We only had one scheduled for that day. And Jack, do we put more than one dog in the chamber at a time?
More than four.
And is there, are they all partitioned, or are they together when they're in there?
They're together.
Well, see, that's the thing. I mean, we've, I've heard dozens of reports from people. Now, I can't, you know, tell them to y'all and verify them all. But we've heard, especially years ago, where a couple pit bulls will be put in the chamber at our county together, and they, one of them kills the other one. They fight and kill each other before, you know, they're, before they're, what you call overcome by the fumes.
I don't, I don't like the idea of more than one being put in there myself either, unless we did what Doctor Wood suggested and, you know, put them under heavy sedation prior to them going in there.
I would think that would be extreme minimum, 'cause, I mean, to me, you know, I don't mean to be too rude here or anything, but to me, it's just definitely inhumane. I don't know how anybody could possibly see it any other way, to have dogs fight in this gas chamber and kill each other before they're overcome by the fumes.
Absolutely.
Excuse me, Rick. Have we done a cost study based on the medical funds we have, what it would cost to have it euthanized by a veterinarian or a staff person of a veterinarian?
There's more than enough money in the.
For how long, I mean, how?
Forever. You won't even depend on it. I don't, I don't spend fifty percent of the time. And if it's fall short, I would raise funds to.
Do we need to tape a change?
No, not enough at the thing.
Funding's not even an issue. If, if, if the funds would ever fall short, we would raise funds.
I can move on.
You wouldn't have to worry about it.
I mean, yeah, if you, if you guys, you know.
Okay, I would, since we have the funds, I would make a motion that we get RFPs and do the euthanizations by lethal injection.
That'd be fantastic.
We have a medical director. Can't he just do that or negotiate something with his Veterans Association? Do we have to go through a whole RFP process? We're just turning it to the medical director to handle.
You don't have to do an R, I, I do the RFP inside the, like I do in the past.
Right, right, so, let's just do it with the medical director. I don't want a whole nother case up. Who's in charge?
You don't have to do a little thing out to the public. We can run it through the program.
Okay.
And any vet in the county that wants to do it. In fact, I'm gonna need help. We tried to do this with the spay and neuter, and it was difficult.
He's the microphone that I gave Jack.
I'm sorry, 'cause it's, it's a loss for a lot of vets to do this service, from what we reimburse them. So, we'll, we'll be, get it done.
Okay.
Okay, ninety days is a good time. I don't wanna break a jump we're doing tomorrow.
It could be done yesterday.
You can have RFP out, costs and everything else, yesterday?
Yeah, it's done. If you want it done today, it's, I can have it done.
Awesome.
We, we don't put dogs to sleep every day, so.
Right.
Gotta ask our attorney. Hang on a minute.
Yeah.
Right, any problem suggesting it, making a motion? Jerry? Jerry? Oh, okay. No, he was talking to Jim. Gotta make sure we're legal on all this before we, we may wanna do something, but I wanna make sure.
We were actually discussing it while, concurrent process.
Okay, right, that's what I thought.
Sidebar.
I don't, I don't believe you need an RFP. And the, the, I would term this a professional service.
So, we can give direction to our medical director to go forward with the program of doing the euthanization by injection?
Right, I mean, the only thing you would accomplish in an RFP is, is trying to, you know, ratchet costs between the various vets. And I don't think that's gonna accomplish anything, any good outcome. So, I think we probably need to flatline the cost, come up with an agreement what the cost is gonna be depending on who's doing it.
We'll keep it within the medical fund.
Right.
And not exceed the medical fund.
And, and, and treat it as a professional service. We don't, we don't do an RFP for medical service right now. So, I, I think we're, we're fine handling it with, without any bureaucratic burdens on it.
No, that's, that was my hope. I didn't wanna get into another cluster.
Okay.
So, if you amend your motion.
I'll amend my motion to exclude the part of the RFP.
And give it to the medical director.
Give it to our medical director to proceed in whatever way.
Consider it done yesterday.
Good, awesome.
I'll second that.
All right. Anything further? Mr. Caleb?
Hi.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Continue with the.
So, we'll move on to the spay and neuter here.
Before we start this, Rick, can I ask another question of Doc? Because I've been looking forward on it, no offense, I. With the, in regards to.
We can roll this in there, too.
Huh?
We can roll this in there, too.
Well, I didn't know what the cost again, versus the medical fund, versus a mandatory. And I know Commissioner Kokowski had brought us numbers back, where we raised the fee of adopting dogs fifty or sixty bucks. I wasn't agreeing to that. I felt that took it somewhere out of a family getting a pet, okay?
Yeah, cost is not an issue again. There is enough money in the medical fund, and it's a voluntary fund. We add that five dollar, and it's not a mandatory thing for anyone in the public. If they wanna contribute to this fund, it's a five dollar special heart. We raise more money in that fund than we can expend if we spayed all the dogs and euthanized all the dogs. So, if you wanna amend your first motion and do both of these at the same time to expedite this, that would be, that would be fine. Or you could do another motion for this spay and neuter.
I prefer to do them separately. But the reason being is there, 'cause right now, we've got a fifty dollar voucher. It's only being used twenty percent of the time. So, it's only ten bucks per dog right now we're costing out.
Correct.
Okay, simple numbers. Where is this going to affect, I mean, down the road as you have to go out and negotiate with other veterinarians to do a mandatory spay and neuter? Are we then becoming, not to hurt the APLs and stuff? They charge more for a dog under spay and neuter, I'm assuming? 'Cause I think that's where the numbers came from. Are we gonna have an issue with the rescues? Because they're adopting dogs out at seventy-five or a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty, and their costs are three thirty-two on your average numbers.
Right.
Is there a middle there? I mean, again, if we give it away as government money, it's taxpayers' dollars we're giving away, competing with the private sector slash not-for-profit. And I don't want to harm anybody who does this because they feel it's the right thing to do. So, I'm, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get beat up later today.
Right, I think, I think.
Because we're doing all these things based on taxpayers' donations.
Well, you're, you're safe in that you're not having people from the general public come in and spay their dogs with county money. These are dogs that are already within the pound. So, they're technically, after three or four days, are technically county property. So, you're not competing with for-profits with nonprofit money. You are competing with nonprofits. And I see that point, and I defer that to, to that group. If they've, if that's a concern, that they won't adopt as many dogs out of the, say, Friendship Animal Protective League as opposed to the pound, again, that's a valid point. But I, I would defer that to, to their leadership.
Well, that comes out of economics, that's why I was bringing it up. I'm reading through all the material, and there are certain cost levels that.
Well, we're supplying the ones that are unadopted already to them. And they're getting those dogs for free, and then adopting them out with zero cost.
Yeah, but aren't they spaying, neutering those dogs also when they go?
No, we spay and neuter them through the program already before they make it to the Animal Protective League. So, the dogs that they're receiving through this program, they're receiving for free. They've been vaccinated, heartworm tested, examined, spayed, neutered, cleaned up, and they're ready for adoption. So, the costs that they normally incur are already taken care of through this program. So, when they adopt that dog out, their only costs are just their boarding and, and maintaining that dog until it's adopted.
Just a, go ahead, Rick, from your side.
Well, every rescue that I know of, and really, the humane societies and stuff, you know, our biggest thing is to get the dogs spayed and neutered. 'Cause, you know, quite frankly, when they're not, we just get, you know, so many more litters and dogs get killed. And so, I've never met a rescue group, group or humane society or APL that isn't, you know, thrilled about spay and neuter, so.
So, if the county moved forward on a spay and neuter program?
If the county moves forward on a spay and neuter program.
Mandatory.
Mandatory. I mean, there're gonna be a few backyard breeders who would be upset that they can't get a dog, you know, and out of the county kennel and breed it, you know, and sell it like it's a purebred or something. But the rescue groups, APLs, humane societies, they're gonna think this is fantastic.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion further?
Wait, we gotta vote.
We haven't voted yet.
We didn't vote yet. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
The commissioners, I think Doc Woods pointed out something, and it needs to be pointed out again, about where the medical fund comes from?
Yes, it's the Stan Senegar five dollar heart-shaped tag. It's extra five dollars that people pay instead of the fourteen dollars. They pay nineteen dollars, so, all that money is actually a donation.
It's generated, generated by concerned.
People who care about our dogs and that come to our kennel.
So.
It's not taxpayer dollar.
Before we go out there and people are, are, you know, making comment about the expenditures of tax dollars, this money is for those people that are concerned for the welfare of those animals. And the interesting part is it comes from good animal owners. They pay more for their tags.
Like you.
Because they're concerned for the, those, those animals, and, and their good pet owners already that are, that are providing for the funds to support these services.
We also get some grant money from pet plates and, and other sources. So, hopefully, now that we are doing these two things, maybe we'll see some extra donations coming into our dog pound in order to continue these good programs that we have going currently and are continuing to do.
Okay, then, just one quick thing, and I don't wanna spend long at all on it. But I know a lot of people, you know, talk about how the rescue groups that we might go over to the county kennel and take a dog for fourteen dollars and then sell it for like a hundred or a hundred and seventy-five. And, you know, try to, I know a lot of people, you know, talk to the people up here in the administration building, try to make it sound like us rescues are making a lot of money. And not necessarily that you guys believe that. But typically, you know, and things are gonna change now, and all the dogs are gonna be spayed and neutered. But typically, we'll spend a couple hundred dollars on getting the dogs spayed or neutered. We spend, you know, like fifty dollars on vaccinations or so. And then, that doesn't account boarding if we have to board it, and a lot of money for just other things. So, you know, typically, we lose a few hundred dollars on each dog. And I'm not gonna belabor in front of everybody. But if you guys ever, you know, hear that and wanna know about it, I know, you know, Michelle Reichlin and her, her stuff, she would be happy to go over anyway who wants to see it.
Well, he said some of these rescue people are losing, you know, ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars a year.
Who was a schoolteacher. Her husband was an engineer, and she took her whole salary every year as a schoolteacher and put to her rescue. And, and so, yeah.
God bless those people.
Are losing thousands of dollars. And typically, rescues lose a couple hundred dollars on each dog.
Not anymore.
Well, we're very, very appreciative, thank you.
You're welcome. Do we wanna open it up to public comment? I seen somebody had their hand raised. If you'd like to come up, anybody, public comment, come up to the microphone.
Thank you. I'm gonna give you copies of this.
Are you sharing?
Yes.
Okay, nice to meet you in person.
Rick? Rick?
We'll give it to his assistant.
Do you have an extra copy of that slide for me?
Sorry, Rick, I can give it to the clerk.
First of all, I wanna thank you commissioners for passing that. That's awesome.
You're welcome.
My question, too, now, Dr. Woods, and this has been my big concern, is once you euthanize these dogs, lethal injection, what's gonna happen to their bodies?
Yeah, cremation, common cremation.
Fantastic.
Actually, to a funeral home in Vermillion, they have a specific crematorium.
You got the microphone.
Sorry, we're gonna outsource that to a funeral home in Vermillion. It might be still be Lorain County, I'm not sure. And they have a specific crematorium, the only one I know of, that specifically in a human funeral home, for animals only.
That's awesome.
And we'll, we'll go through that process.
Wonderful, wonderful. Okay, I'm a little nervous. Dear commissioners, this letter is a result of a previous complaint filed December of 2010 that has never been addressed or responded to. On December seventh, 2010, an email was sent to Sherri Penya regarding the unprofessional behavior of two Lorain County Dog Pound employees. To date, it does not appear that the issues have been addressed regarding the treatment of rescue people. Individuals involved with rescue are not involved to make money. The public is not aware of the sacrifices that people from rescue make, from the cost of bailing out the dog from the pound, the veterinarians' bills, which can range from a hundred and eighty dollars to four hundred and fifty dollars, the cost of gasoline, food, the time spent caring for the dog, and the emotional attachment to the dog. Not to mention, most of us have full-time jobs. We also don't get paid for this. This, so this is truly a labor of love. When I arrive at the pound, I am treated with contempt and feel that the good I do for these dogs is being ridiculed by unprofessional employees whose income is provided by taxpayers, such as rolling of their eyes. Not only am I a Lorain County resident that contributes to their income, I can be considered a customer. Rescue people take this very seriously. We make sure the dogs go into the right homes, not just the first twenty-nine dollars that walks through the door. So, all the facial expressions and rude comments that are made about rescue people doesn't need to be working at the Dog Pound, dealing with rescues or the public. We are not asking for a yippee every time we get a dog, just a little respect. Now, I know Jack's been wonderful. Gennaro and Nelson have been wonderful. I know you let one of your employees go there. But the other girl that I'm talking about is the one that is very rude and constantly rolling her eyes when rescue people walk through that door. And like I said, we're a customer first. That, that's run as a business. So, if I, I work for a general bottling company. If I were to treat my customers like that, they'd be going to Coke or Seven Up. So, that's just, that's just common. And I also included photos of some of the dogs that I have saved from that Dog Pound. You see, the general public will not adopt these kind of dogs. It's the rescue groups that stand forward to get these dogs. The last picture on that page is a German shepherd who was deemed dog aggressive. That is another female shepherd with her. The, the previous dog is a dog that I now have care, right now. His name is Stitches. He came in assuming that he had been in a dogfight, and that's why his name is Stitches. He has come a long way. But the general public will not take these kind of dogs. So, when Jack calls rescue groups, hey, we're full, that's the first people that come forward is to bail these dogs, not the general public. So, I'm asking for not a yippee every time that I get a dog. I'm not asking for a pat on the back. I'm just doing it because I care about what happens to. I'm just doing it because I care about what happens to those dogs.
We appreciate what you do.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
Not about the dogs.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners. David Ashenhurst, Oberlin. I have four questions. They're all pretty brief. First, on number seventeen on the board items, did I understand changed numbers on that from the clerk?
Yes.
Is it the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-third.
It says twenty-third on there.
At nine forty-five, from nine thirty to nine forty-five.
And fifty-three becomes fifty-eight parcels?
Fifty-six becomes fifty-eight.
Fifty-six becomes fifty-eight.
Okay. Second, Mr. Innis mentioned, I believe, threatened litigation? Is that, is it pending or is it imminent?
Imminent.
Thank you. Third, on the Green Acres deed restriction matter, I wonder the date of that, when that happened?
February 7th is when I got the communication. I don't have a timestamp.
Okay.
I'm sure the clerk does. So Monday afternoon.
Is there, is there something the clerk will have that we can look at?
You can, you can look at it right, right after the meeting. I have it in my folder here. Unfortunately, is, I just read it, and there's a small issue with sale or rental of the property, where the proceeds has to go, and it looks like the court's maintained some jurisdiction, so.
Correct, Judge Walter asked to do that.
There's a few things we, it's not as simple now as I...
It's not free and clear, but there is...
Well, you told me to sell it, and it's not quite what we can actually do right now.
Well, I think if the right buyer would be okay with the judge.
Okay, I, as I said, I would very much like to have a...
Similar to that property in Lorraine is the way it reads to me that the judge has final...
No, I understand. Actually, I moved here in 1995 on that same block. So I was a neighbor to that for twelve years of the, of the fifteen that has been a question. So I really...
I thought you were a resident of the facility, David.
What?
I thought you were a resident of the facility.
No, no, I was a neighbor on the block. And the final one is, is the only thing I, question I have that's not on the agenda anywhere. But I was hoping someday we might have applause for transit, like we just had for your resolutions on dogs. This morning on the radio, I heard that the state had put something like eighty million dollars of additional money into transit. And it was a kind of a confusing thing. And I thought perhaps that the administrative district of the state in which I reside, we could find out what that means for Lorraine County transit, if anything.
It's really a simple equation. And I always appreciate when you, when you bring up some of those issues, especially with respect to funding. We went through this last year. You have to have money to get money. You have to have match money and/or capital needs, and even be able to match those capital needs. Last year, a great deal of money became available, and we saw a half dozen, roughly half dozen of the major transportation systems within the counties that had a dedicated revenue source receive a very deep amount of assistance from various funding pools that also included the Department of Transportation. Some of their money was shifting around. We don't have that dedicated revenue stream to, to be able to access those funds. Because we don't have a little bit to spend, we're missing out on a lot to spend. And, and that's greatly unfortunate. Until that situation changes, opportunities are going to pass us by to be able to improve transit for the residents here in our community that have no other available ability to move about for medical appointments, church, and work opportunities. That, that's usually where that money is, David. It's unfortunate.
So that particular thing has no impact?
I don't believe it's going to impact us at all. But, but, you know, we, we always keep our eyes open. We're always looking for additional source of revenue. Remember, nobody gives us one hundred percent on the dollar. Most of it's eighty, twenty, ninety, ten, fifty, fifty. It all starts with the local community. Right, it all starts with the locals' community saying, I have a little bit of money. Can you give me some more and match what we have? And we don't have the little bit right now.
Ms. Smith?
Elizabeth Rummix, also Oberlin. I would like to refer to number fifteen in the correspondence, Wood County Commissioners on Governor Kasich Considering Selling or Leasing the Ohio Turnpike. I'm wondering if the county is looking at this, is doing any research on it, is responding to this? It seems to me that's a very, what is the term I want? Something that needs to be studied greatly before turning it over to it. And so I would be interested in knowing if the county is looking at that.
Well, we actually addressed this back in Governor Taft's, when he tried doing the, or was it?
What goes around comes around.
Ken Blackwell, who was spouting the idea of doing this, and we came out partly against it. So I mean, currently, I would just wait and see until it goes any farther. Wood County's mentioned it, but I mean...
It was about five years ago. It was, it was Blackwell that was, was championing that. One of the things, and you may or may not have, have read this, there's user fees that operate the turnpike. As we all know, toll fees, I don't want to make it sound silly. But there's currently no tax dollars. It's, the, the turnpike is supported one hundred percent by user fees, and is considered one of the, the best roads on the east-west corridor. Has a huge designation federally as being very well-maintained and accessible. You know, Indiana did this with, with their turnpike, and they've had some, you know, various degrees of success with that. But it's also a capital asset of the people of the state of Ohio. While the taxpayers don't pay tax dollars, they pay users' fees. And it also generates a lot of user fee from people that don't live within Ohio to, to use that, to support that. So it's, it's kind of a mixed bag with regard to whether they should sell that asset at this time. And I think we're going to see a lot of communities looking to sell assets as revenues continue to dwindle and, and expenses continue to increase. But, but I think at the time, we, we looked at it with weighing in on a letter of support or not weighing in a letter of support. The, the environment wasn't as critical as it is today with, with, with economics. But, but locally, we wouldn't see too much effect on Lorraine County. We have two exchanges, uh, four exchanges that, that feed Lorraine County. A lot of people think that a turnpike exchange generates economic development. I beg to differ. All you have to do is look at those exchanges and see that very few of those corridors enjoy any kind of economic success.
What the problem was, Jim, which we argued about with Mr. Blackwell's proposal, was that the contracts that Indiana entered and also Chicago with the Skyway Bridge, when they did the same, was no improvements could go to parallel roads or aligning roads that would hurt the amount of business that the turnpike privately held would generate. So every dollar you put into public roads, you would have to match or get approval from the owner or lessor of the turnpike. And that was the big argument.
Right.
We couldn't fix I-90 necessarily here.
We couldn't compete. We couldn't compete with the...
Compete with their traffic. So if we made our roads better or did improvements, they would have the ability to do the same thing, and that could be an additional cost to the state of Ohio. It was a long convoluted, said myself, and Mayor Grace came out heavily against it. I think there's still a YouTube somewhere you can see out there with us on it. So I mean, I mean, but times have changed six years later, and the economy has not rebounded at all. And I think, just like us looking to sell Golden Acres or any of our other properties, that could possibly garner cash flow.
Yeah, I think the biggest concern locally would be to ensure that the state had some restrictions on the ability to close exchanges. Well, the, the ones that we have haven't developed those powerhouse of economic development corridors that some people had envisioned. We still want to make sure that they don't close any of those exchanges. It's, it's very difficult to get one, and it's dawned impossible to get it back if it's closed. So...
And the fifty-eight corridor and the Balmhart Road corridor have not exploded. Two of the slowest-used exchanges along the turnpike. So you would hate to see us lose our ability to use the turnpike and get off of those exits for those who do. So it'd be a whole lot of work, and I'll talk with...
CCO?
Yeah, I'll talk with Kim down there, the Commissioner of Wood County. And I said I'll be there next Friday and ask him what they're hearing.
But six years ago, when they were talking about doing that, we weren't having the threat of our local government funds being cut like we are now today. If that would be enough to fill the gap of their eight-billion-dollar shortfall, you know, then maybe we wouldn't be facing those drastic cuts in the county and everywhere else, and, you know, cities and...
Which still doesn't get out of our issues we have locally with funding.
Correct, but I mean, it does, it is a different scenario today than it was six years ago.
Thank you.
Shirley R. Johnson.
Should I say my name again?
I said it for you.
Thank you.
Oberlin.
I'd like to refer you to number seventeen on the correspondence. It's a list of the Legal Aid Society of Cleveland's free clinics, which do not occur in Lorraine County. I want to know if we have any such free clinics in Lorraine County.
We do have a portion of the Legal Aid Society, and I'll let Jerry comment on it, because they put a new directive on it. They close their local office, correct, Jerry?
Oh, they have closed their local office?
They closed the one in Eliria.
We're, we're on a, we're on a circuit rider. Okay, the, the, so I know, I know they provide services, but, and they come into the community occasionally with some resources. And I, I do recall last year hearing about a few things that were scheduled in Lorraine County. But we could probably contact them and find out if they're going to provide any of those seminars here if you like. I mean, it's not a big, big issue.
Well, I think that somehow or other, we've been lax in getting information, newspapers or otherwise, about how the Legal Aid Society is or isn't operating in Lorraine County. And I think it's important to get that information out, as well as to know what sources there are available to people who, probably the people that need it, can't commute to Cleveland very well, or even to any of these locations that are listed as free.
I think they work something through our local bar association. The bar association makes...
Well, obviously...
Their facilities available to them.
Obviously, we don't know, and we think we are doing it. And I think it would be very helpful if we knew a little more about it. Thank you.
Sir, if you could just state your name and where you come from for the record, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ron Urban. I live in Wellington, Penfield Township. About ten or twelve years ago, the state installed drain tower in front of our house. Okay, and when they did that, Lloyd Gordon, the township trustee, informed us that would be at no cost to us. But we would be assessed a fee to keep the Allison ditch clean from all the water that was going to be draining through that way. Okay? At the time, the, they connected drain tower from our gutters to the risers and the culverts that they put in. Okay? And then when you guys, this past summer, stated that there was going to be an assessment done for the rainwater runoff, okay? I called the county engineer, and they said that since I was already paying an assessment fee, I would not be assessed. When I got my taxes, I'm being assessed by, in my taxes, and I'm also paying the assessment fee to the township who reimburses the state to keep the Allison ditch clean. My question is, well, then I called the engineering office, and they sent me a form for a credit. There's three credit applications in here, but none of them address this particular situation.
So you have a maintenance fee and you have an assessment?
Yes, for the same ditch.
And the stormwater fee?
Yes, yes. So my question is, how, you know, how much do I got to pay to keep one ditch clean?
Well, maintenance, the ditch is one thing, and then the stormwater runoff is a second issue.
But it was, in the papers stated that that was to keep ditches clean.
The, the, let me, let me, let me see if I can...
Please.
And, and I'm weighing through these issues also. And, and, and we, you know, the SWAC is getting ready to meet, and we're going to the regulations. The, the stormwater fee is, is, can, some of the funds from it can be used for ditch masoning, ditch cleaning. Can be. The, but the, the specific purpose of the fee is to begin to manage a stormwater district so that we can meet EPA mandates and also comply with permitting processes. And so no, it, there will be some people that have two separate fees. Some will have maintenance on ditches that they already have been agreed to and contracted to work on. And then, but there's still impermeable soil that, that cause additional runoff that don't percolate. And those fees were assessed to each property on average. And I see, Bill, you're, you're here, you may want to come up and, and help me out a little bit with this. So there are going to be those residents. We have received several inquiries similar to yours. And I think that one of the things that's going to have to be looked at is, is whether there's going to be a wavering of certain amount of fees and, or not a wavering of certain amount of fees. Those are all things that have yet to be decided as we work through the development of the stormwater management district. And Bill is behind you, and he may be able to speak a little better to that, to the, to the why we have the two fees.
Yeah, the fees that you currently have, that was instituted through either a petition process or the county ditch program, and everyone agreed to pay a certain maintenance fee on that particular ditch. The district is encompassing work throughout the whole county. Now, there has been some discussions about a reduction in the assessments that you're paying on, on current ditches that are under, under maintenance agreements.
Right.
That hasn't been decided yet. Like Jim said, the first SWAC meeting is going to meet here in a couple weeks. And those items will probably wash out next year. This first year's program, you're going to pay those fees. And next year, hopefully, we'll consider a credit on, on some of the ditches that are under maintenance, as yours is.
Right.
But that'll probably be, happen in, in next year's billing.
And again, the...
And, and this application that they, this waiver form is a free thing that they can submit to the engineer's office if they do have certain things that they are eliminating the rainwater runoff?
Well, no, there will, I think there might be a fee with that. And, and I think what you were mailed was the current credit program, which really doesn't address the, the ditches that you're talking about. And that program, that credit program hasn't even been created yet.
Right, there, there is, there is dozens of assessed ditches, collaborations that have been entered into maintenance. And how that's affected by the overall management of the district has yet to be decided. But it's a, it's a misnomer to believe that the fee is there for ditch maintenance or ditch cleaning. Can, is it a permissible use of some of those funds? Yes, it is. However, the bulk of funds is not going to be used for ditch cleaning and ditch maintenance. That program is supposed to run concurrent with the stormwater management district as an ongoing process to continue to try to get people on ditch maintenance. There simply won't be enough money generated from the stormwater district to deal with all the ditch maintenance and, and ditch cleaning issues in Lorraine County. So it's never really going to replace. It may lower some of those costs if, if, if they smooth out that, if they start doing some money into the ditch program again. But I, I find it highly unlikely that it's going to supplement those current agreements and the need for future agreements to more fully deal with the runoff from the communities, which we're being forced to deal with. It's not something that we just one day woke up and wanted to do. And Bill, you're aware of that more fully than I am.
Yeah, in fact, it was on the agenda tonight, the Schroeder ditch, you know, which was completed under the ditch program. It took a while to get the ditch accepted because there were some issues that we were working through with salt and water. But that's, there's going to be a public hearing on those assessments that those property owners are going to pay for, maintain that Schroeder ditch, which...
As well as the eighteen-dollar charge for the runoff.
Stormwater charge. Now, there may be, like I said, be in the future a, a reduction in that fee, but that hasn't been decided as of yet.
That's going to be, hopefully, part of, one of the first parts of the SWAC meetings, agenda items, I would imagine.
Maybe, Commissioner. I, I wish I could tell you that. Unfortunately, you know, this, this SWAC landed on my head.
I know.
And, and, you know, I, I do have the first meeting scheduled, and we have a lot of material to go through. The, the biggest issue is going to be, even with that fee, there's not a tremendous amount of money, and there's a tremendous amount of need. So I don't want to, I don't want to allude to any reductions in cost or changes until we get through a, a whole mountain of problems and, and, and define where some of those costs can be. But let me state what I said again. It is highly unlikely that those fees are going to diminish the needs for assessments on ditch maintenance and collaborations to do those things, the ones that are in place, and the need for future ones. It may slightly decrease... It may slightly decrease the assessment cost if enough money's put into ditch projects. Highly unlikely that's going to supplement in the future, I just want to make, I just want to make that clear, and Bill, would you kind of agree with that, maybe?
Yeah, I just don't, I mean, for instance, that Schroeder ditch project costs three hundred thousand, and I mean, and that was just one section of ditch, so you can understand through the county, there's not going to be enough dollars even through the fee to do all the projects and then maintain the ones that are done.
And also, I, I want to point out that we've made a promise, and we're working hard to honor that, that we're not using those funds to supplement other things that are going on in the county, that is, it's not going into the general fund, it's not being used, and, and we're, and we're not opening up another department to run this, we're, people like myself and Bill and, and some of our community development folks, we're, we're working on this, and putting a lot of time into it, but we're not, we're not withdrawing anything against those funds to do that, so we're not, we're trying to do this without opening up another department hiring people to do it, so there's a lot of work ahead. But I, I don't want to be misleading to this gentleman with regard to the potentiality for seeing a rebate or a reduction anytime soon.
But hopefully, within a year or so, he, the fact that he does have a maintenance...
Again, there's, there's dozens of those maintenance agreements out there now, and there's a need for dozens more, and it's just not, while the eighteen dollars sounds huge, when, when you take it in the aggregate of, and then the massiveness of the problem, you, you would see that it's, it's probably, you don't want to say no, but it's, it's unlikely we're going to see anything with any relief in that area quickly.
It isn't the eighteen dollars, it's more to me is the principal.
I understand, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board? Oh, and just for a note, Commissioner Williams was out ill this morning, I went to do the dog, I didn't announce it, Commissioner Kokowski said she didn't mention, Tom was out ill this morning, so, correct Neil?
Yeah.
No one else? Motion to move an executive session is outlined by the prosecutor and county administrator.
I'll second.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye. Thank you, Dr. Wood, for taking a couple hours out of your day today for us.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving thirteen counties, secure and safe Ohio RideShare makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion, while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. One eight hundred eight two five ride, or register online at ohiorideshare.com. Point, click, ride. How about a little trash talk about Lorain County Solid Waste Collection Center in Elyria? The collection center makes it easy for Lorain County residents with ID to get rid of stuff you don't want going into a landfill, stuff like hazardous waste, acids, household bleach, oven cleaners, antifreeze, paint, herbicides. Take it to the collection center. It's a drive-through, so it's easy to get rid of scrap tires, even if they're on the rims. The collection center also takes e-scrap like computers and monitors, circuit boards, microwave ovens, smoke detectors, even household TVs up to twenty-seven inches, no console models, fluorescent lights and ballasts, reference materials and books, fire extinguishers, all kinds of stuff. Drive-through, drop-off, just don't bring curbside recyclables, explosives, medical waste, radioactive materials. For what's accepted and not accepted, visit loraincounty.us/solidwaste. The collection center near Big Lots at 540 South Abbey Road in Elyria is a service of the Lorain County Solid Waste District, the Department of the Lorain County Commissioners.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the eight hundred and twelve traffic fatalities for children ages five to nine, almost one-third, that's two hundred and fifty-four, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings, children not educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs, so basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't, hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and, and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorain County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to four, teaching them to walk the streets safely is, is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us, many times we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorain County, and, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to four, part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely, and we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house, simulated sidewalks, simulated streets, we have actual working stoplights, the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work, operational railroad crossings, we also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign, so we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of sixty, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting, so if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or ten times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, you know what, Ms. Spansky, we were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, look left, look right, look left, so that was very rewarding. And, so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work, so they're just like, oh, ooh, and we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, well, we can see that train all the way down the track, do you think we can make it, because you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run? And of course, they're, they're very enthusiastic, and no, we shouldn't do this. So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks, and just because one goes by and the signal stops, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop, and to look both ways, and even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks, they should walk and keep, continue to look both ways, because it's not safe, and they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone, it could be very dangerous, because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming, because they are so small, and, and as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in kindergarten through fourth grade, some of those children are very small children. The, the main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe, you have to make that ultimate decision, so make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour, it's very dangerous, and the same thing with trains, we tell them, that train could take, you know, forever, it's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and first grade, and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids! A lot of times you have to walk to get to places, and when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no, those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous! I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat.
Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without...
The second video, we show second, third, and fourth grade, and it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Asimo.
What's up, Asimo? How's it going?
Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Stepping in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb, then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this, they relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile, and he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars, he goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks, so they both cover the basic skills, one is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups.
I think it was really nice because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
It's a good idea, because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a, with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection, what happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars, those are things that parents don't teach their kids, they go to safety town and they learn left, look left, look right, look left again, and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did safety town, and I still catch him flying across the street, and all I have to do is say, Matthew, remember Asimo? And he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the, in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten, they start out learning all those safety rules, then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe, we don't have to follow those rules anymore, we can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road, and I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful, we still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst, we tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them, so I think it was a good review, I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it, we're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
In two thousand and nine, Mr. Carney felt that if we expanded the program and went into the technological era, that we could cover more schools and, and help more students. We felt that second, third, and fourth graders would get much more out of it and enjoy it if it was on a computer. We use one disc that's called Walk Smart for second and third graders. It teaches the children where to walk, it teaches them things that they should know about traffic signals, and the third part of it is watching for cars. The fourth grade disc is called Safer Journey, that is in a three-part section with a fourth part that's added called Library, so that if they want to go back in as fourth graders and actually look up anything that they just viewed, it will give them a description. Each one allows the student to interact on the computer individually.
You move the mouse back and forth. Try it.
We thought the student will look at it, because they love to work on computers, so that they would look at it as fun and a game, and each student can work at their own level or at their own pace. Our response has been amazing.
They enjoy being on the computer, so I think just by clicking and being able to listen and observe those things, it's more interactive with them. This program is teaching the skills of being more observant as they're crossing the street, and being more aware of what's going on around them.
It makes me work harder, we have to guess with, if the cars can come from which way, gets my brain on learning, it helps me learn how to cross streets and how to watch for cars.
You have to look both ways when you go across the street and everything, because I like, because it would actually teach me something.
You know, sometimes we just think that students know exactly where they should be walking, there's a sidewalk, and we know that they should cross at the light and look both ways.
It, it tells you what to do and what not to do in the street.
This just reinforces, because sometimes the students don't know all of those things, they haven't always been taught, they are much better off for being part of the program.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.